Ah, America the Beautiful. What more can I say?
Let me say good morning. We will call the April 21 meeting of the Douglas County... Let me wait for Kavanaugh. You ready? Are you gonna sit in? Are you? Okay. Okay.
But he's down at our office. Looking for his brother.
Here he comes. We'll go. You wanna go? Okay. All right.
So maybe is this Kavanaugh time?
It is.
We're 9:02 here.
He yields courtesies to it. All right, good morning. We will call the April 21 meeting of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners to order. We'd like everybody to first stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we'd like to note that there is a copy of the Open Meetings Act on the wall over here on the north wall. And I think we've also in the past noted that there's an automatic defibrillator here if anybody needs in regards to any safety issue that may happen. With that, we will go into the meeting of the Douglas County Board of Equalizations and ask for roll call, please.
Commissioner Morgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan. Mr. Chairman.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the board equalization meeting held Tuesday, April 14, 2005. Also, item B, call for the meeting and set Tuesday, April 28, 2015, as the date for the hearing on certified assessment and corrections. Is there a motion to approve?
Move for the approval.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vote.
Oh, sorry. Been six years.
That's right.
Citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments at this time?
Commissioner Morgan? Sorry. That's okay. Motion passes.
Okay. Again, citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments at this time? Seen none. We'll go to item D, presentations. The introduction of Mr. Jack L. Bain as the Douglas County Chief Field Deputy for the Assessor Registered Deeds. Ms. Badiato.
Good morning, Commissioners. Diane Badiato, Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds. You know, we're gonna... I think we're going to put into the budget maybe a handheld so that when I can come around, I can just talk to you like this and everybody will be able to see me and I'll be able to see everybody else. So can we put that on the wish list?
We'll wish.
Oh, he has one.
We can get you a box, Barbara Boxer box.
That's a good... Hey, that's a good idea too. Anything that will work. I'm real easy to work with. I came to you today. I don't know if it's protocol or not, but I think we have a very important... Good morning, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Important announcement to make on behalf of the newly combined Assessor Register of Deeds office. And we've done an extensive search to do our due diligence in bringing on a very crucial member of our process for taxation and valuation. And I'm happy to announce that we've come to that hire. And I want to take this opportunity to introduce all of you to our newly hired Chief Field Deputy. And his name is Mr. Jack Baines. Jack will manage and coordinate all of our mass appraisal activities as well as guide and participate in the technical and statistical work of setting values by working with our appraisal staff. Our appraisal staff does a very good job. And now we have the leader of that team that's gonna bring it all together. And I'm so excited about that. Jack is no novice. He has more than 25 years of experience in appraisal duties in Kansas. Most recently, he was the Deputy Assessor in the Assessor's Office in Wyandotte County, Kansas. And his experience also includes extensive work with ad valorem taxation, linear regression, ratio analysis, and cost analysis and valuation modeling. He's also worked for county and state government in various other related areas. So I'd really like to take this time. I'm really excited about having the addition to this very improving office. We're working very diligently and Jack's gonna be a great asset. So please welcome Jack Baines to Douglas County family. And Jack, would you like to say a few words? Let's give him a hand.
Thanks. I'm glad to be here and I'm ready to get to work. Getting kinda anxious. I've been here for about a week now, just kinda looking over things. So glad to be on board.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You have Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to... Welcome you. Thanks, Sam. I want to welcome you. And just to ask, is there's a rumor that you're gonna be driving a chartreuse car so people know when you're coming? Is that it?
With a big target on it.
Chartreuse?
Sure.
No, we do welcome you.
Thank you.
Great. I read your resume. I was very pleased that Ms. Badiato did what she did and really took a real hard look and brought in someone. We have a really excellent staff in the Assessor's Office and the Register of Deeds Office. You'll find that. And I just want to welcome you. I think this is terrific and it's a good fresh start. And I congratulate Ms. Badiato for what she's done. She's... In my estimation, I've said public many times, she's one of the best officials I've ever known in my career. So in my lifetime, really. So welcome aboard. You'll love it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can I just ask one question, Commissioner Boyle? You talked about chartreuse. Is there something you saw out in the community lately?
Yeah.
That you saw chartreuse?
Well, it's just that when I'm asked to speak at different meetings and stuff, like at the South Home Mall Neighborhood Association, they say, "Well, what's going on in the county?" And I say, "Well, if you see an unmarked black car driving slowly through your neighborhood, it's probably the assessor." So I'm just saying chartreuse, you know.
Well, it's really interesting because we will be coming forward very soon on something that relates to chartreuse.
I'll be damned.
Yes. It's really interesting that you should say that.
I like it.
It is. Yes, it is. Thank you so much, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
We'll go to item E, resolutions, applications for tax exemptions on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the county treasurer.
Motion approved.
Second.
Is that included, German?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Everybody, please vote.
Motion passes.
With that, we will call the meeting of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Morgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Mr. Kavanaugh, Mr. Duda, Mr. Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chairman.
Here. Item one, minutes and claims. Letter A, approval of the minutes for the board of commissioners meeting held Tuesday, April 14, 2015. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, April 21, 2015.
Move for the approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Everyone, please vote.
Motion passes.
Consent agenda. There are nine items. Is there anything anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Seen none. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
There's a motion. There's a second. Please vote.
Mary Ann was never this fast.
Motion passes.
Item three, recognition and proclamations. We'll go to item A and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Kraft.
Yes. The family cannot be here today. So I would kindly request that we lay this over for two weeks.
Okay.
You want to make that a motion or just do it?
That a motion.
I'll make that a motion, yes.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to lay it over two weeks. Everyone, please vote.
Just both, please. Okay?
Usually.
Motion passes.
Item B, recognitions of county employees completing 30-plus years of service to the county and our new HR Director, Karen Bush. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm very happy to be here, especially on such a wonderful occasion as to be able to honor the employees. We have 17 employees that have more than 30 years of service that are being recognized this year. There are five individuals who were able to be here today and I would like to bring them forward. The first person is Dennis Yeoman from the sheriff's office. And he has been with the county for 40 years.
Wow.
Morning, Commissioner. Jim Dunning, Douglas County Sheriff.
Morning, Jim.
We have a little training problem with Dennis. He thought that the rule of 85 meant that he has to stay here till age 85. We've since clarified that. He'll have 40 years next month. He's been a great employee, been a great friend. Worked a variety of areas within the sheriff's department. We're proud to have him. And if he did stay till 85, which would be about as long as I'm gonna be here, then that would be great. So Dennis, it's yours.
Well, thank you for the recognition. I got a similar award, I guess, last year for the same thing. And just grateful for the opportunity to be employed this long. I've tried to serve with honor and integrity the whole time and I appreciate Sheriff Dunning letting me stay as long as I want to. There's no mandatory retirement age. I'm living proof of that, obviously. But it's not ready to go yet and I'm gonna finish out this... Most of this year. It'll be 40 years, May 29, when I started Ted Janning with sheriff. I worked his last term and four terms under Sheriff DePereaux and now Sheriff Dunning. And it's... This is my family, my other family. They're all working or babysitting today. So my sheriff family and everybody else is here and I appreciate the opportunity. And thank you for the recognition.
Thank you. Dennis, come around.
The next individual that we'd like to recognize is Melissa Marcello. And she's with the purchasing department and she has been with the county for 35 years.
Great.
Eric Carlson, Douglas County Purchasing. And I'm sure most of you know Melissa specifically works in the mailroom, which provides an integral service to both the city and the county as well as the courthouse. And so I'm very happy to say that she's done a great job of running that facility for us. And I can only hope that I can be here that long, if not more, having been here four years this month. So I really appreciate the service that she's provided to the county and congratulations.
I do have to ask Melissa, which I've asked her every time I see her, is business picking up? Which she always enjoyed.
Business picking up.
Steady.
Well, I know she said she had to run off to a meeting at 10 o'clock, so... Okay, the next individual that we'd like to recognize is Laura Kniglia with 30 years from the treasurer's office. Congratulations.
They all took a vote before I got here that I was the one speaking. I just want to recognize Laura for her leadership in the Douglas County Treasurer's Office. She's done a tremendous job, was recently promoted to branch manager. And so my belief is that she's got 10 more years to go then and she'll have to hit 40 years as well. So congratulations and thanks for your leadership.
If anyone wants to come down and take pictures, you don't have to stay up there. Come on down if you want to. Want to get closer? You're welcome to. We're gonna... We'll be... I think somebody wants photos. So after, maybe we take a couple seconds afterwards and come down.
That would be wonderful. The next individual is Tracy Hitchler from the treasurer's office and she has also been here for 30 years.
Thank you.
You can come on down on this side too. It's very informal. I just think photographs are important, so you know.
No, if you want to come after she goes around, we'll give you minutes to take pictures.
Tracy Hitchler is our training manager and has been for a number of years and has done a tremendous job. I get a lot of compliments on the attitudes and the performance of our employees, especially our new hires and some of the veterans that she's trained. So I just want to recognize Tracy publicly for what she does to make sure that our employees understand customer service. We've done a tremendous amount of customer service training and Tracy has been responsible for that. And I think she said she's going to stay 10 more years as well.
And the last individual we're recognizing today is Wendy Petty, also of the treasurer's department with 30 years of service. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Wendy is an awesome lady, just always smiling. I was wondering how long it was gonna take her before she started smiling as she walked down the aisle. But she provides tremendous customer service to our citizens out at the Maple Customer Service Center. And you've been there since I've been there, but how many years altogether?
30.
No, at Maple.
Oh, at Maple. A lot. Yeah, most of it.
She's been there throughout the time that I've been as the treasurer and has consistently represented us well and gets tons of compliments from the citizens about her positive attitude and just does a fantastic job for us. And I think you're planning on staying another 10 as well, right? So we're gonna keep these long-term employees as long as we can because they do a great job for us. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I've just been made aware that we have one more individual that we would like to recognize. And that is Daniel Hager with 35 years at the youth center.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brad Alexander with the Douglas County Youth Center. Dan was actually just recently named Employee of the Month, so I think that's pretty impressive after 35 years to still come to work with that level of enthusiasm and to have that level of respect from his coworkers. I do have to say that I think it had to have been awkward for Dan in 1979 when he showed up at the Douglas County Youth Center to be thrown in a position where he's actually supervising people that are older than him. But he's handled it really well and I only hope that I could have the level of enthusiasm he has, you know. And if I happen to reach 35 years, it's extremely impressive and we're very, very fortunate to have Dan here at the Douglas County Youth Center. He represents the county extremely well. So thank you for the recognition.
Thank you very much for your time and the recognition of these employees, Commissioners.
Thank you. And again, welcome, Karen, to Douglas County. Wanna, again, on behalf of the board, thank all the employees that are here and that are not here for their service. We appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
All right. With that, we will go on to citizens' comments. Is there anyone here that may want to speak to something that's not on the agenda? Anyone out in the hall lingering that may want to speak to something? Seen none. We will move on to committee discussions in action and Commissioner Morgan and Kavanaugh finance.
After we adjourn, and I'm not sure if we have an executive session today or not. We do have an executive session, but we'll go probably 20 minutes later or so up to room 903. Who do we have today, Jim?
We have the...
Sheriff, for sure.
Veterans at GIS.
Perfect. Okay. Anything, Joe? No? So we'll go from there. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Rogers, Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a note on your recognition. There is a resolution that you can act on today if you so desire.
Thank you. Let me go back and do that. Is there a motion to approve the recognition and proclamations?
Second.
Okay. Everyone, please vote. Thank you. We'll move on to item G and human resources. And Patrick, is there anything with CEO thoughts?
Nothing for a part.
Okay. Item three, my understanding is that there has been no development on 605 and there was an ax by the chair to lay it over. My understanding, they're still working through negotiations on that bill. So if that's the case, we'll just leave it there until next week. Okay? With that, we do have need for executive session and we will... What, for litigation? Just litigation. So with that, is there a motion to go into executive session?
So move.
Roll... Please vote.
The record should note how quick we get done with meetings sometimes. This is good.
Motion passes.
You
I vote to go back and do a turn.
They already, we've got a motion in a second. Yes, please. All right. Thank you.
We'll take this nine, ten minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, ten minutes, is that what you said, Mike?
Motion passes.